Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, the Good News Agenda has some visitors, so in the sake of letting them get going on this, and since we have a lot of people on public input, I'm asking for a motion to, let's see, amend the agenda and move the Good News Report up to Item 2.
Second.
Or to Item 3, I'm sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That is approved. Otherwise, everything else will go in order. So, could I please have the Good News Report, Deanne?
Yeah, and I'm going to welcome Principal Dan Fisher. This is a new feature that we added. We've had one school so far, which was Eugene Field. So Dan drew the next time up, and so he is here to represent Discovery Elementary. And we'll turn it over to you, Dan.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity to shine the school spotlight on Discovery Elementary. Appreciate the opportunity. To begin with, we have just a little background information about Discovery. We opened the doors in 2004, and our mission statement aligns with our district's mission statement, "To educate and prepare each student to succeed in a changing world." Little bit more about Discovery, the demographics here. You can see on your screens there, right at 876 students, and that is in preschool through 5th grade. We do have one class of LAP, Learning Adventures Preschool, at Discovery Elementary, right at 16 kids in that as well. And to demonstrate just a little bit more of the size of Discovery, this is a pre-COVID clip, just to demonstrate the size of our school. If we were to be counting schools all through South Dakota, Discovery would be the 20th largest school, larger than Mitchell, Yankton High Schools, Peer High School, T High School. So sometimes when that traffic gets a little congested in the morning, we just appreciate the extra patience it takes to get there. Although Discovery is a large elementary school, our staff came together and said, "We don't want people or staff to be just a number." So with knowing that, at Discovery Elementary, all students and staff must feel a sense of belonging and to have the supports needed to be successful academically, emotionally, and socially. It is Discovery's responsibility to create a safe, inclusive, and nurturing learning community. And in just a little bit, we have a video from a staff member and parent at our school, Gina Mees, that'll share her thoughts on that in just a little bit. The second area of focus that we have is creating a positive partnership that is student-centered. Creating a positive partnership with families and their child's education will help develop a positive school experience for students that they will not only remember but will last a lifetime. And we have a student here, a 5th grade student here tonight, that will share his thoughts on that too, from a student-centered perspective as well. And lastly, at Discovery, we have something that we've implemented over the past three, going on four years now, called the Zones of Regulation. And we have our school counselor, Ms. J.C. Johnson, here tonight to share that and a few other video clips demonstrating that as well. So with that, Ms. Gina Mees on our first area of focus.
Hi, my name is Gina Mees, and I am a vocal music teacher at Discovery Elementary. I also have a 2nd grade son here at Discovery, and next year, my youngest son will be in kindergarten here as well. When we first sent our son to school, I have to admit, I was very nervous. Not only because my first child was going off to school, but I was so concerned that he'd get lost in the shuffle at such a large school, and I didn't want him to become just a number. Not long into that school year, I decided to apply for the music position at Discovery for the following year. I was just as concerned for myself as I was for him in such a large school. I'm the type of teacher who thrives on a sense of community and togetherness. Would it even be possible to get to know the other staff members very well at a school the size of Discovery? Well, it only took a few minutes into the first day of school, as I walked into the building with my son, to learn that he was most definitely not just a number, and I wouldn't be either. I couldn't believe that my then-1st grade son was being greeted by name, by administrators, teachers, custodians, EAs, and so many students. With the last quarter of his kindergarten year being taught online, it had been five months since he had walked the halls there, but still, he was remembered. As a staff member at Discovery, I feel the same sense of belonging. There's always a staff member who's ready to lend a listening ear and to share a laugh and a story with. Discovery feels like home, and the students and staff there are not only challenged, cared for, and loved, they are known.
The next area, I'd invite Mr. Jack Golden up to the podium. He has put together a speech to hit our second area of focus.
Hi, my name is Gina Mees, and I am a-
He is currently a 5th grader at Discovery Elementary.
At Discovery, the staff do an amazing job of making sure that all students feel included and safe. By setting that example and making it the expectation, the students also work hard to make an inclusive environment for everyone. Everyone has a friend or an adult they can always talk to or hang out with at Discovery Elementary. And to me, that's a big part of why I think Discovery is one of the best schools. All the teachers and staff at Discovery push us to be better. They push us to work hard, challenge ourselves, and be the best students we can be. They get to know each of us, which makes us feel valued and important. Being kind and inclusive of everyone will be something that I take with me into the rest of my life. I will also continue to work hard and be the best person I can be, because that's what Discovery has taught me. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Jack. Just a little bit too about Discovery's attendance. Within this, I think it demonstrates too that families and students want to be at school. We're right at that 97th percentile with the 97% stability they want to be at school. So really, a tribute to our staff at Discovery. And for the next area, invite our counselor up, Ms. J.C. Johnson.
Good evening. About four years ago, our staff started an intentional movement to put self-regulation at the forefront of everything we do with our students. In order to help students recognize their emotions and build tools to self-regulate, we taught all staff and students Dr. Dan Siegel's Terminology of the Brain and the Zones of Regulation. We knew it was important to give staff and students common language that they can use in the classroom, in the lunchroom, or out on the playground. The Zones of Regulation helps kids identify their feelings by assigning one of the four colors to the feeling. This has tremendously helped our students gain skills in regulating their emotions and problem-solving abilities. Students learn how to use body clues and different strategies to stay in the green zone or move back to the green zone. Learning about brain science and Dan Siegel's Flipping Your Lid Terminology has helped students and staff manage emotions in healthy ways in order to create a calmer, more understanding, and empathetic learning environment where students feel that sense of safety they need to learn. One of our students, Amel, is a great example of how easily and helpful it is for our students to learn about their brains. And I have a little video of him explaining what we teach our students, and he can probably teach it better than most adults can.
Today, I'm going to tell you about the brain. This is a model of the brain. This is the downstairs brain, this is the upstairs brain. The downstairs brain controls all your feelings and reactions. While the upstairs brain controls all of your thinking. And sometimes, in situations, and you get so mad or sad that your lid flips and all you have is your reactions and your feelings for the downstairs brain. So then, so then, so then you can try to calm yourself to make your lid flip back. So then you can think it through and make sure that everyone in the situation is calm.
And that video was taken when Amel was a 1st grader. Now, that student is a 4th grader, and he's still able to learn about the brain to gain a deeper understanding of that brain science and self-regulation. At Discovery, we know that students must be in the green zone or have unflipped lids in order to grow emotionally, socially, and academically. Thank you.
We have one final clip, and this just happened to be, as I walked out of the office one day, and this gentleman was there, and he said, "I always look forward to the school newsletter because the counselors always update us on the brain science." So I thought, what a great way to end with something like this.
Hello. Oh, my name is Terry Liggins, and I have a 3rd grader at Discovery Elementary. One of the things I really appreciate about Discovery is their commitment to sharing with all of the students the Zones of Regulation. During the day, part of my role as a public educator is sharing the importance of brain education, being trauma-informed. And I know that that's very important to interaction with all human beings everywhere. So the fact that Discovery Elementary continues to show a commitment throughout the school walls, through the newsletters, and even when I talk with my daughter, she can articulate back those Zones of Regulation and all that brain health. It's so impressive. I told Mr. Fisher how happy I am to have Leilani here at Discovery, and I just want to encourage everyone to keep up the good work.
That concludes our presentation. Are there any questions?
No questions, but thank you for taking the time to put this information together. That video with the beginning of school is very impactful to show the amount of students. My sons went to Robert Frost, and that's much smaller than that. So it's good to keep that in mind, as we are looking where our next maybe elementary school and what size and where that will be located and how that does. So it's very impactful to us, as well as having the students participate. So thank you very much for doing that, taking the time and your family coming here. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I think it's great. It's fun to see how every school is really its own community and has its own kind of personality. And certainly, the families that attend those schools and the staff and the principal all contribute to that personality of that school. And so as we continue to see all of our schools, it's going to be awesome to see all of the strengths that each one of them has that really caters to that population of people and what they're invested in and how they spend their kind of their time and their resources and their values. So thank you very much for sharing specifically about Discovery today.
And I would just add, I think if we had a hue of color for tonight, it would be red. And most definitely. And just that sense of the building community and the belonging and togetherness and the unflipped lids is so critical for all of us to kind of remember. The student-centered, and Jack, you just brought it home with saying to all of us, "Be the best that we can be." And your words were just so meaningful, and thank you for sharing those with us. And what a great night to share it. Thank you.
Move on. Onto the approval of the minutes. The meeting's held January 24th and February 2nd to have a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those are approved. We'll move on to public input. We don't have anybody on non-agenda items. We just have people on agenda items, and they're all, there's five, and they are all in opposition to administrative recommendations. The board sets aside a portion of each meeting agenda to hear from community members on items of general interest or concern as well as regular agenda items. When we have more than three people speaking, we are limited to 15 minutes total, so three minutes each. And Vice President Parker will time each of you, and when you have a minute and 30 seconds left, she'll let you know. So start wrapping up your comments at that time. When you are called to the podium, please identify yourself and your address and any organization you might represent for the record of the meeting. If you have any visual aids or handouts, please see Deanne to make sure that we get those approved before they are distributed or put up on the overhead. And we don't take comments during this time on personnel matters, and we expect all attendees to treat each other's with respect and civility. The board will not respond to individual comments, and staff may be requested to follow up as needed following the meeting. Thank you for coming tonight, and first, we'll welcome Tim- And first, we'll welcome Tim Eckhart. To the board, to the mic.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Tim Eckhart. I live at 2312 South Polk Avenue, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, 57103. And I am here representing Sioux Falls Education Association. I'm asking you all tonight regarding the, or I'm speaking to you all tonight regarding the district's legislative positions, specifically the administrative position that was posted in support of House Bill 1216, which has been withdrawn. A bill that would have taken away the rights of all school district employees to collectively bargain, removing continuing contract status and stripping them of their due process rights. I have yet to talk to an educator, member or not, who didn't feel blatantly disrespected after reading the statement which was posted on the district's website. Like most others in this room, I understand this was not a board-voted or approved position, but it was still a position that revealed publicly an unwillingness to truly collaborate with everyone involved in the daily education of our children. This position confirmed what many employees have been feeling for the past year, that their district does not support them, their district does not appreciate the work they do, and their district does not value their voice as professionals. To be blunt, support of this bill created a sense of distrust throughout the district. Collective bargaining is a way for the district to come together with the professionals to work on solutions to serve the best, to best serve our students. The written description of support was on the website stated there was a need for the district to raise wages to be competitive with other industries to attract new employees. The labor shortage we experience is an issue which the district only has themselves to blame. While our neighboring districts worked with their staff to create more competitive working conditions and bring in new employees, our district has chosen to lock into five-to-10-year-long agreements and then be unwilling to open them when faced with the challenges we have before us today. The flexibility they desired was stymied by a contract length of their own creation. If they truly valued the voice of their employees, the bill would have never gotten support from the district. While this wasn't a board-endorsed position, it was a decision that portrayed the position of the district as a whole and has real consequences. I wonder how many great teachers will leave? How many bright young minds will not apply to work here because of this? I wonder what would happen if a teacher, an EA, a secretary, or any other employee would put out a statement that incorrectly represented the views of the district? Should any employee be allowed to start public statements with "the district believes" without first being approved by the board? In a time when our staff has done everything in their power to help keep our district running, like subbing multiple times per week in other classrooms during their planning time, taking on extra duties, helping serve lunches, or riding the bus to help monitor behaviors, this is the thanks they get. Communication can be difficult, but this action said, "We do not want to communicate, because we only, we have the answer." No one person has all the answers. Thank you.
We'll move on to Cooper Caraway. Oh, I'm sorry. Cooper Caraway, please.
Happy Valentine's Day. My name is Cooper Caraway. I'm the president of the South Dakota Federation of Labor. I live at 5130 South Greystone Avenue and work at 101 South Fairfax Avenue. I have a visual aid. Will everyone who's wearing red tonight to stand in solidarity with workers, stand up, please? The South Dakota Federation of Labor represents over 100 trade and workers organizations across the state. And we've been very concerned with the direction that the legislative process and the legislative report of the school district this year. Typically, Sioux Falls School District is the benchmark. It's what all the other school districts look to. But the school district lately has been having a lot of trouble with its collective bargaining process or its refusal to participate in its collective bargaining process. No other district in the state is having these issues. No other district is having the issues with negotiating teachers, having problems negotiating with custodians. They're not having problems negotiating with food service workers. They're all coming to the table amicably and finding solutions to the districts and the communities with the problems that they face. But in Sioux Falls, there seems to be a distinct issue. And rather than retraining or training district administration on how to, on best practices, on how to engage in the collective bargaining process, the attempts have been to go around and subvert the collective bargaining process by outlawing the collective bargaining process, stripping school district employees not only in Sioux Falls, but school district employees across the entire state of their rights to collective bargaining, their right to assemble, their right to join together in a union and bring to you the issues that they face. The South Dakota Federation of Labor and the 100 affiliates that we represent are very concerned with the direction the district is taking. But I'm here to let you know that we see you, we see the board, and you have been determined stewards of this sacred institution of education throughout the pandemic. And we trust you. We trust each and every one of you to do the right thing, to take back control over the district and make sure that your employees, these folks here, feel seen, feel heard, and feel respected moving forward. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Bob Hoffman. Oh, he did hear me.
Yes, Robert H. Bob Hoffman of 212 East Pam Road, 57105, here in Sioux Falls. Speaking with regard to the board's decision to recommend HB 1216. I was a teacher at Lincoln High School for nine years and at Southeast Tech for 25 years. I'm currently retired. And my message is that during the years of my employment and my retirement, I participated many times with SFBA negotiations with some of the people present in this room. I have also been part of the SDA Board of Directors, as well as two terms at the NEA Board of Directors at the national level. And two things that I've learned from those experiences are, first of all, what makes great public schools? And secondly, the importance of educator voice in producing those great public schools. So it is critical that the professionals and the practitioners in the classroom be involved. So make no mistake, teaching has always been incredibly difficult, if not impossible. But as I have been watching from my retirement, it seems the unthinkable has happened. And I've seen this in other states across the nation as well and the effects that those have had. It seems that teaching has gotten even harder these past few years. So I, and in my years as an educator, I felt supportive of administrators, again, including people in this room, and coworkers who worked tirelessly to provide the best education to students that we could. When I saw that the Sioux Falls School District Administration came out in favor of HB 1216, a bill that stripped educators of their basic working rights, such as they did at Southeast Tech once they coordinated things across the state, I thought, you know, I can't imagine being a teacher in these times. I don't think I could teach now, knowing that my boss didn't want me to have basic working rights, like due process and the right to bargain. I understand the district needs to be able to be competitive with surrounding industries. That's something we dealt with at Southeast Tech all the time. So if I were a teacher now, I would be wondering what, in what other ways my district was unwilling to support me.
Thank you, Bob. Next, we have Danielle Cleveland.
Good evening. I'm Danielle Cleveland. I live at 4417 South Northridge Circle. And I have been a teacher in the Sioux Falls School District for 25 years. I currently am teaching at Ben rifle Middle School. It is a privilege to have a career in education. I am fortunate to have been able to work with many amazing fellow educators. And I'm honored to have been able to work with students and teach them to the best of my ability. As a Sioux Falls School District employee, I've often experienced what it's like to be part of a team. It's the middle school philosophy, team. And I've often been very proud of our district playing a part of our team. We are a team working together to provide the best educational opportunities for our students. Our schools use a team approach each and every day, supporting our students as we go through our learning journey together. It takes a team of teachers, secretaries, support staff, custodians, lunchroom, admin, parents, just to name a few, to make sure all our students receive the education we know they need and deserve. After reading the position the district administration posted about HB 1216 a few weeks ago, many of us felt like we weren't united, we weren't a team after all. And it makes it very difficult to do our job. And it's very challenging to meet the needs of our students when we feel this way. It was disheartening and difficult for me to hear the position on HB 1216, because I had so many questions and fears begin to surface in my mind. Why did my district take a stand against its teachers having a voice? What did this mean for my profession, my future as an educator, and those wanting to follow in my footsteps? Didn't our voice matter anymore like it has all these years in the past? And what about our due process rights? Should I be nervous about my future as an educator in the Sioux Falls School District? And was our commitment to our profession not valued after all? My phone overflowed with calls and text messages wondering the same thing. Danielle, we're partners in this district. What's happening? Why do we feel like outsiders now? I'm here to ask you to value our team, the people who've worked tirelessly to keep our schools open in these uncertain times. Please unite with us, value our voices as professionals. Use our position, use your position to send a message that we are a valued part of our school district because we want to provide the best education for our students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll move on to our final, is Timothy Lemke.
Hello, my name is Timothy Lemke. I'm a custodian at Rosa Parks Elementary. My address is 500 South Highland Avenue, Sioux Falls. I represent, I am the president of Athene Local 1025 for the Custodians. The, I'm not speaker. The actions of the school district over the last year or so has had a negative impact on employee morale and cannot be understated. Withholding collective bargaining for another three years in exchange for a decent wage increase is and was unethical, especially during a pandemic that we have all worked through. We agree that wages need to be increased across the board, but certain management issues need to be addressed as well. Hiring and retention rates prove this, and getting rid of collective bargaining is not the way to do it. Extending our contract takes away our ability to advocate for improved health and safety measures for all employees and the students as well. This has been one of the causes of decline in morale in the workplace. As custodians, employees, and taxpayers, we should all be held accountable for the things that we do in the workplace. We ask that the school district reconsider's the way that they have been treating employees so that we may continue to hire, retain, and serve our community as safely and efficiently as possible. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for speaking tonight. I just have one brief comment that I would remind the board that the compensation that we have granted over the last year and a half has been over and above the regular contracts, and we have increased to the amount of $8.5 million. So while there may be some unrest over that, we are very happy that every employee group has received increased compensation in the face of the workforce challenges. And with that, I would turn it back to the president.
Thank you for that information, Dr. Stavum. And yes, and as most people know, 1216 was withdrawn by the submission, so it is not on the legislative calendar anymore. And what we are working as administration and the board in favor is 1308, which was the amended position as well to allow for more freedom and compensation for all of our collective bargaining groups. We have eight collective bargaining groups in the Sioux Falls School District. So it makes us a little unique in comparisons to some school districts. So that leads to some other issues at timing and so forth like that. So 1308 is the bill that we're in support of, which right now, teachers were allowed to give bonuses and additional compensation for tuition, I believe, and some other reimbursements, moving expenses. And we'd like to have that flexibility with all of our working groups, so. Any other comments by board members? Seeing that, we will move on to the conflicts of interest. There were no new conflicts presented. Oh, we did, we amended it, so.
Well, okay.
Yeah, all right. Complex, and then I'll move on to, yeah. Sorry about that. We'll approve the agenda again, even though I amended it. We can do it again, okay? Yeah.
Okay, we did it, all right. Yeah, yeah.
It's fine. No, it's good to keep me in line sometime. So we'll move on to conflicts of interest. Any new conflicts presented? None presented. Onto approval of the consent agenda. Item 9A through E, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That is approved. Onto the supplemental consent agenda. Items 10A, 1, 2, and 3, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. That is approved with one abstention from board member Ryder. Onto 10B, approval of claims of avera help.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign, with one abstention from board member Parker. Onto reports, the superintendent, summer program.
And Dr. Boyson will be delivering our report on some of the things that are happening, some similar to years past and some maybe a little different. So we'll turn it over to you, Dr. Boyson.
All right, good evening. Tonight, I bring you the summer programming report for 2022. During the summer of 2022, students in the Sioux Falls District, pre-K through age 20, will have opportunity to close a gap on their reading and math skills, engage in authentic hands-on activities, and participate in credit recovery and course acceleration. We'll go through some of those programs and opportunities that we'll offer and we'll highlight any new additions and expansions along the way. There we go. So pre-K through 5, we'll have some opportunities for the three services, provide infant and toddlers with disabilities, the ability to continue to receive their early intervention services, promote developmental growth throughout the summer. Ready to Start Programming serves our incoming kindergarten students who have not had access or have had limited exposure to early childhood programming. And those students attend five weeks prior to the beginning of the school year to focus on targeted skills and promote a successful start to their early kindergarten years. Next, we have elementary summer- start to their early kindergarten years. Next, we have Elementary Summer Academy, and this is an expansion to previous years. In 2019, we started in three buildings, serving 185 students. Last year, we expanded to 10 buildings and serving just over 1,000 students, and this year will expand into 11 buildings. And the highlight there is it's a six-week program for kindergarten, first, and second grade students, so those students that have finished those grades. And traditionally, it was in non-ear entitle buildings, and we've expanded last year to non-title, and then we added an additional site for non-title students, so we're able to serve 72 more students this year. And we really focus on strengthening those reading and math skills along with the opportunity for some hands-on STEM activities throughout the day. And it should be a great opportunity. And again, we're looking forward to serving 1,450 students this summer across the district, and that's open to all students in all our buildings that are rising kindergarten, rising first, second, and third graders. So that's an expansion program for us. English learners, English learners who attend the elementary immersion center have the opportunity for a four-week program during the month of June, and they focus on those four domains of reading, writing, speaking, and listening to strengthen those skills. The Extended School Year, or ESY, serves students with disabilities aged 3 through 20, and to maintain those skills that they've acquired and to continue to build on those skills without losing those over those extended breaks like summer. And the last program in the pre-K through five is our migrant. Students who qualify for services have the opportunity to attend a program that extends those learning activities, and they do have some hands-on activities that they can take home after that opportunity. Middle School, we have an expansion there. Our CTE, or Career Technical Academy Summer Camps, run a morning and an afternoon program. Traditionally, they have had a healthcare camp and a construction camp. This year, they're going to add the culinary and the baking camp, and then the nuts, bolts, thingamajigs camp. And so that should be really fun for those middle school students to be able to be onsite out at the CTE Academy and participate in one of those camps. English learners, again, at middle school, they have the opportunity to focus on the four domains, and they are in two different community opportunities for extended learning. And so that's a good connection for them. Migrant students in grade six and seven can attend CTE Academy for two days, so they get on campus out there, giving them that exposure, looking forward to those opportunities as they become high schoolers to attend the CTE Academy. Running starts for incoming sixth graders helps with that transition to middle school. That's free of charge to all middle school students, and that's provided through our SIR funds. And then summer academic interventions at the middle school help to build skills in reading and math identified for students that need those extra supports at middle school level. And then a new addition to the middle school is the Summer Library Access, and they'll be open a couple hours, two days a week at those middle school libraries to provide opportunities for students to get back into the school and then have access to let them see. High School. Our high school programming, we have the Connections Program for our ninth graders, our incoming students to help with that transition into that high school programming, and students do receive a half of elective credit for completing the Connections course so they can get a jumpstart on those credits they need to earn that graduation and get their diploma. Our English learners at high school looks a little bit different. They have courses in English Language Development, Personal Finance, Algebra, Health, and Speech. So there that our ELS can get some extra jumpstart again on some of those courses. We have credit recovery for our Summer Up Program. Students who are behind their cohort or need just a little extra time to finish their coursework can finish it during our Summer Up Program, and that's offered at all our high schools. And then we do have High School Summer School, which those students that want to get ahead or take a class in the summer to knock one of those classes off their schedule so they can take another opportunity throughout the school year, that's offered. And then we have migrant students at the high school that can take any of the courses, and those are paid for tuition-free, and that's any of the summer school opportunities. All of these courses are paid for with Business Sponsors, SIR III Title I, Title I-C migrant grant, our Title I, our Title III, Special Ed Funds Head Start, So Empire, United Way, and Student Funded individually. So in summary, the Sioux Falls District is committed to providing quality education opportunities for students. Summer programming allows for readiness experiences, credit recovery, earning additional credits, maintaining academic and developmental and behavioral goals, English language acquisition, and the opportunity for internships in the community. And with that, I'll stand by for any questions.
I just, we all have seen the impact on children in missing school due to it being closed March 20th on. And I know of children we've received in our district from out of state that have had no schooling for two years, that are young. So any of these summer programming that we can, you know, help support, I think are so important because these children only have, you know, the 12 years in K through 12 to 13 to get those skills to move on, and they don't get to wait a few more years. And we know how they are layered upon. So thank you for working within the district and the staff and so forth to come up with all these opportunities and availability programming for the students. Thank you.
One thing I forgot is to get lunch, too.
Yeah.
I think it's also important to note that we really do try to meet students where they're at. So we do have, you know, the students that you mentioned that might be struggling, but we also have students on the other end who are trying to excel in other ways. And so offering other options, whether it's exploratory programs at the middle school or summer school classes in the high school, those aren't all people trying to catch up. Those are some people who want to be able to take more arts, more of the arts classes, or more AP classes, or whatever it might be. And so I just think it's important for us to see that big picture and keep that balance because we do have students at so many different levels, that the more that we can offer to a variety of students, the more we can appeal to what their needs are, and again, meet them where they're at, and hopefully make them be successful. So I'd like to see the variety of options that we have available for all students. Thank you.
Since we have a large teacher contingent, I taught summer school for 28 years, and it was a gas. I liked it. It was fun. And it's, and it's, it's a good service for kids. I mean, it's really, I didn't teach anything but the regular summer school ed, but it was really a good experience. And I know they're always looking for people to help because right now we have a lot of programs in the summer. So, and I know it's nice to get away. I get it. But if you'd be interested in helping out, I'm sure we'd love to have you. So think about it. Thank you.
Good point.
I need your comments. Seeing none, do I have a motion to acknowledge the summer programming report?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Onto the legislative update. Todd Beek, give us an update on positions and what's been happening with some of the bills that we're watching.
I will. Thanks. We have, it's been three weeks since we went over the first review of this. A lot of bills, a lot more have been introduced. A lot have died already. Those are the ones that are in green in your handout. We'll talk about the bills that are still alive, and we'll specifically mention ones that we had a specific position on. We'll kind of avoid the neutrals and things like that. So if you first just go to page two, one that we've already looked at but is still alive, we have an oppose on is House Bill 1039. And that is, that's a bill that changes or lowers the valuation of grasslands over 1,950 feet. We've already talked about it. We oppose that bill. That bill has got out of the House Ag Committee, 10 to 3, and is going down to the House. Stop me if you want to, if you see something here you want to talk about that I've jumped over. The next one is on the next page, 1075. That was, we've gone over that. That was a bill that we opposed if it wasn't amendment, amended. It modified the legal and official notice publication requirements, basically saying you can also find these notices on the web, and it's going to cost us about $1,000 a year. We oppose that, but it's passed both houses. It is on to the governor. Next page or bill is all the way over on page six. House Bill 1125, that's a new one, but it's just a placeholder, so no position on that one. House Bill 1163 would create a provision to allow students that are not age-eligible for kindergarten to be enrolled, and that was amended if they, if they pass screenings and, and they turn five by September 30th, because the amendment, we're neutral on that bill as amended. We defer to the Department of Ed for the feasibility of implementation, assessment readiness tools, and financial resources needed to screen kindergarten readiness. That bill passed House Ed 12 to 3. Next bill for an update is on page eight. It's House Bill 1185. It allows students to wear beaded graduation caps to represent cultural significance. We suggest a neutral position on that bill. It has passed the House 54 to 14 and is on to the Senate. Next page, House Bill 1190 would provide paraprofessionals a tuition-free opportunity to enroll in a teacher education program if they serve a qualifying school. We said no position on that bill. It's a recommendation. That's been referred to appropriations, so it hasn't gotten out of the House yet, hasn't gotten out of the Appropriations Committee, and it'll sit there for a while. That's usually what happens with appropriations bills. On the next page, House Bill 1198 requires schools to predominantly display either the state motto or the state seal, both which contains the phrase "Under God, the people rule." We suggest an amendment to the bill allowing the display of the South Dakota flag, which contains the state seal, to meet that requirement. That bill has not been amended, and it's passed out of the House 41 to 27. So that's on to the Senate as well. House Bill 1203 would require school districts and other local entities to hold a public hearing and meet specific printed criteria when their total property taxes levied, not the mill rate, but the total property taxes levy will exceed their property taxes levied in the prior year. We oppose that bill. Schools are already required to hold a public hearing for their budget, must print their proposed and final budget in the newspaper, including sources of funds, which includes, of course, property taxes, and must approve the property tax request in their budget, which is sent to the county auditor. For comparison, the state does not have to conduct a special hearing and specifically notify its constituents when sales tax revenue will exceed the prior year's amount on schools. So we have an oppose on that. The next bill is a key bill, 1207. It would prohibit a district's use of open enrollment standards that consider the individualized education needs of students and a school's ability to provide an appropriate instructional program and facilities to meet those needs. We oppose it. The language of the bill conflicts with a school district's obligation under 1328421 to consider whether it can provide an appropriate instructional program and facilities, including transportation, to meet a student's needs prior to accepting an open enrollment application. So we have that as a key bill, and we have that as oppose. House Bill 1211 would make non-compete agreements voidable by the employer if the employer requires a COVID-19 vaccination. We recommend no position on that bill. It has passed out of State Affairs 8 to 4. Well, that prior one, 1207, it's in education, but it hasn't come out yet. 1212, the bill would prohibit public and private employers in the state from issuing COVID-19 vaccine passports. We have, suggest no position on that bill. 1256 would establish vaccine exemption options from employer-imposed vaccine mandates. We'd suggest no position on that bill. 1261 provides an avenue under STRS for public employers to rehire retired employees following certain requirements. If qualified applicants cannot be recruited, I think it has a three-year sunset clause on it. Well, we support the bill. It provides an important tool that allows districts to fill very hard to fill positions in a time when qualified candidates are scarce. I think that bill came out of the School Administrators Association. That bill is in State Affairs. It hasn't come out yet, hasn't been acted on yet. 1262 prohibits discrimination based on a person's vaccination status or possession of immunity passport, and it declares an emergency. We have no position on that bill. We're on to page 14. House Bill 1300 requires schools and municipalities to hold their regular elections on the Tuesday following the first Monday in either June, that's with the primary, or November, that's with the general election. It also allows entities to combine with each other and/or, you know, cities, counties, or schools, and any combination thereof can combine. We would suggest an amendment. I know they're trying to save money with this bill, kind of by forcing these entities to hold their elections on the same day. So you're going to hold an election, you have to go to three different polling places. However, we would say they should also add some permissive language to allow school boards, if they want to go to four-year terms instead of three-year terms, that could put all the elections on the even year. And then you would, if you want to increase turnout, you don't have an odd-year election because that's when our turnout is by far the lowest, and plus, it would cut in half the cost of elections for school districts. So that bill got out of State Affairs, 10 to 1, and is going to the floor. It wasn't amended. House Bill 1302 modifies the tuition responsibilities for children in residential treatment centers by basically saying if you're on an IEP, you're eligible for this program too, where the State Department of Ed will pay the state aid to the schools, rather than if you're on an IEP right now, you're not eligible for this program. The school district has to place you, and the school district can't place you if you're meeting your goals of your IEP back in the district. So this essentially would give kids on IEPs, if the district, if they're meeting their goals at school and not having to be residentially placed, they would still have this program available to them. And we, it's a key bill for us, and we support it. We actually asked for it to be introduced. House Bill 1303 is a placeholder. House Bill 1304 is a placeholder. 1308 allows school districts for bonuses, President Mickelson talked about that one a little bit ago, to all staff instead of just teachers. That's a key bill for us. We support it, obviously, and it passed out of State Affairs. House Bill 1309 prohibits public employers from soliciting or considering political beliefs from applicants. Our position is neutral on that. On to page 17. House Bill 1330 is a suggested key bill. It would substantially reduce the amount of property taxes that can be raised across the state. There's lots of deals and things going on here, but essentially can't exceed 1% of your, of your valuations. That's $10 per thousand. There's 117 districts in the state, school districts, that their, their mill rate on commercial property is over $10 per thousand. So that doesn't even count the municipality, the county, or any other taxing districts that would, that would be exceeded by this. So we have this bill as oppose, as our suggested position. House Bill 1337 prohibits a public school from using curricula, curriculum, instruction, standards, or training that promotes a divisive concept or injects politics into the classroom. We oppose this bill. There are multiple areas that require additional interpretation definition, and some sections of the bill would prohibit activities that currently even the legislature supports, such as participation in the Legislative Page Program. That bill was amended, and it got, it passed House Ed 13 to 2. And of the Senate bills. Senate Bill 59, we already discussed. It was a key bill. It's the governor's bill on 6%. That's just been, just the update on that. It's been referred to joint appropriations, so it'll be there for a while. So next update is on page 20. So next update is on page 20. Senate Bill 104 requires school boards to designate no fewer polling places than the number designated by the county commission within the district boundaries. Now, that applied to everybody. That bill has been amended, so it applies to sparse school districts. So we went from opposes to no position on that. It passed Senate Ed 4 to 1. Senate Bill 139 on the next page would allow Chetty Sakaween charter schools to apply for sponsorship from any school district or the State Department of Ed. If approved, the charter school would receive a pro-rata share of all funding received by the district in which it resides. The bill allows for non-certified teachers to provide instruction in Native American language. We suggest opposing the bill. A school district already has the ability to operate a school in accordance with those understandings and standards if they wish. Section 5 requires a contractual agreement between the sponsoring district and the charter school, setting forth the legal requirements of the charter school. If the legislature decides to place legal requirements on a private, nonprofit corporation operating a charter school of public funds, it should do so by passing laws. So that one, we oppose. It, it did pass the Senate 22 to 13. Senate Bill 140 recognizes hair discrimination as an unfair or discriminatory practice. We have no position on that bill. 143 is a placeholder. 167 clarifies the process used by the Secretary of Ed to refuse to issue, renew, revoke, or suspend a teacher or administrator license. Suggest no position. Senate Bill 194 makes an appropriation of the South Dakota Department of Ed to provide grants to organizations that provide early education programs. We suggest no position on that bill. Senate Bill 198 revises provisions related to juvenile offenders. It will establish a one-year timetable to establish a study, study group, and then to have the committee propose changes and the legislature implement changes to the Juvenile Justice Act implemented by Senate Bill 73 in 2015. We suggest this as a key bill, and we support it, and would request to have a representative from the Sioux Falls School District on the governor's appointed committee if this bill passes. We've been working on this issue for several years. Senate Bill 206 is repetitive of 1039. It lowers the valuation of grasslands. We oppose this bill as well. Senate Bill 120 is a key bill. It has died. It was withdrawn. It establishes an education savings accounts for students to use for private school tuition or homeschool costs. We oppose that bill. And it has died. That's it. I'd stand by for questions. More comments?
Any questions or clarifications for Todd? Any question? Thank you for the update. Obviously, a lot going on. I think 550-plus bills, probably the most that there have ever been. So it's hard to keep track of all of them and keep on top of them. So thank you for doing that. Seeing none, do I have a motion to accept and acknowledge the administration's positions on the 2022 pending legislation?
So moved.
Second.
A motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That is approved. Anything else?
I believe tomorrow is SRO Appreciation Day, so I would just like to take a minute and thank all of our, I think we have anyone tonight, but all of our SROs that are in our schools, helping our students. I just want to extend my appreciation to them and for all they do and that partnership that we have with the city that enables us to have that. So just want to give my appreciation for them.
And yes, I'd like to acknowledge all of the nominees for Teacher of the Year. And then next, February 28th, I believe, is the event. So we'll get to celebrate with the five semifinalists and finalists. So thank you very much.
And just a note, we may have a date change on that. We just noted a conflict today. I believe there's conferences that evening that would affect a few teachers, so we're trying to see what we can do with that. So stay tuned on that date.
Keep that date open, okay? Awesome. Thank you very much. Thank you all for attending. This is a great political process. Appreciate you participating and engaging and showing up here. And we listen to you, and we read your emails, we read Let's Talk if it's about us or that we need to do, too. So thank you very much. Seeing nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.